Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd, 2013 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. We have five public hearings scheduled for this, excuse me, for this evening. The first, as long as my voice holds out, we'll try to conduct them. The first one is a zoning application for rezoning of approximately 2.89 acres from RS-15 to RS-12, approximately 16.53 acres from RS-15 to RM-16, and approximately .36 acres from RS-15 to CF along Salem Highway, St. Andrews Drive, New South Strategic Investments, and Mrs. Terri Wheeland are the applicants. On the screen. Good evening. I'm sorry. The allergies will subside in a minute maybe.
Our first public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning change request which will affect two parcels located south of New Salem Highway. These parcels are also located west of St. Andrews Drive, and they're identified on the map that's on the screen before you. The request consists of two parts, and the first part is to zone the area shaded orange on the screen before you from RS-15 to CF, so from single-family residential district to commercial fringe district. If you see the thin black line, that represents the property line. The majority, the vast majority of this parcel is already zoned CF, commercial fringe district, so the request is to zone that entire parcel to CF. And that area is approximately .36 acres, so it's a very small portion of property. The second part of the request is to change the zoning for the second parcel shaded both purple and blue. And that property is currently zoned RS-15 in that single-family residential district, and it was zoned RS-15 when the properties were annexed in 2005. Our zoning ordinance states that if property is annexed and there's no request to change the zone for the properties, and they are zoned for residential or agricultural purposes in Rutherford County, that they be zoned an interim RS-15 or a single-family residential district until such time development plans are contemplated for the property. Since 2005, there have been no development plans for this property. However, the applicants are now requesting for the zoning for the property to be amended. The first is a strip of approximately 2.89 acres, and that's shaded in the blue color, that they're requesting to be zoned from RS-15 to RS-12. Those are both single-family residential zones that permit single-family detached dwellings by right. The RS-12 zone is similar to that to the south along Bell Haven and to the west, and would allow lots with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. And if that property is zoned from RS-15 to RS-12, then there could be approximately seven lots located along the frontage of St. Andrews Drive, and it is the desire of the property owner to construct them so that they would be similar to the Bell Haven subdivision that also fronts St. Andrews Drive. The second part of the request is to change the zoning of 16.53 acres proposed from RS-15 to RM-16, and that's the area shaded purple on the map before you. RM-16 zone is multi-family residential district, and it allows the development of multi-family communities by right, as well as single-family communities by right, and the density is 16 dwelling units per acre. So considering the acre or the size of the parcel, and the proposed zoning of RM-16, there could be a possibility of 260 dwelling units on this property. There are other uses that are permitted within the RM-16 district as well, such as churches and some institutional-type uses. But primarily, we recognize the RM-16 zone as a multi-family zone. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision and forwarding that to the City Council. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have either before or after the public hearing. I do believe that there's a representative of the applicants here this afternoon, and I think Ms. Ray Lott informed me that she would like to introduce the application herself to you, and then be available for questions as well.
Good evening. My name is Cherie Akers, and I'm with Hudson Steel, and I represent the applicant Wheelands, and they're also here this evening to answer any questions. She's pretty much presented very well. The only thing I wanted to correct was the larger parcel is actually 13.53 acres. I think the 16 was adding them all up. It totaled 16, and the one parcel is only 13.53 acres. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Akers? Ms. Akers, we understand you're the newest addition to the Hudson Steel team, so...
Yes, I am.
Sure we'll see a lot of you in the future, so welcome.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna start the public hearing in just a minute, so thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Ms. Akers. We may have some questions for you after the public hearing, so thank you very much. There's no other questions from the Planning Commission for the applicant. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Before I open it, totally though, let me go over our rules briefly. When I open the public hearing, if you have comments, questions, or statements, please come to the microphone, state your name, give your address. Please keep your comments or questions to no more than three minutes, so everybody will have an opportunity to come forward. I'll make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and at the end of the public hearing, they will address those questions to the best of their ability. At the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll try to address those questions. Please, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, come forward, and please bring your questions forward.
Hello. My name is Cherie Scoville. I live at 2818 Silver Springs Court, Bell Haven subdivision. I would specifically like to address the RS-15 change. We would like to address it from the standpoint of the schooling in the area. We have information given to us from James Evans from the central office at Rutherford County, and from Lisa Trent at Murfreesboro City Schools. Currently, Scales Elementary, which is one of the elementary schools that we are zoned for, is 1060. The maximum capacity for the school is 1,000. Rockvale Elementary, which is another school where we are zoned to, has 811 students as of last year, and they currently have 844 students. Their optimum capacity is 850 schools. Rockvale Middle, which is also a zoned school for this area, has 973 students at the moment, and their maximum capacity is 1,000. Riverdale High School is another area that we are zoned for. They currently are at 1902, and their capacity is 2,000. I know you know that there has been some rezoning with Riverdale High School with the opening of the new Stewart's Creek High School, and this has also affected Blackman High School. There has been a number of rezoning schedules which have upset many people in the Rutherford County community that have children that attend the high schools. And that's what we'd like to say, that we feel that this would overbuild the area, that it would overpopulate the school systems with this kind of housing of multiple-unit apartments. Also, we'd like to mention the fact that this is a two-lane highway, a two-lane road, St. Andrews is. It's the former Kimbrough Road, and this would create a great deal of traffic. And if you've ever traveled Highway 99 from 6:20 in the morning until 8 o'clock, you would know that that road is basically a parking lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Just come forward.
My name is Patricia Carventino. I live at 2708 Aristocrat Drive. I just moved into this area as of May. I moved from Antioch, Tennessee, where the building had been overdone, to the point where all the schools in Metro right now are overcrowded, as we know. We moved to that area in comparison to the area across New Salem for the simple rate of crime. The crime rate on the other side of New Salem is predominantly much higher than the crime rate on my side of New Salem, where the new development is. And I was just wondering how this was going to affect our area that we have just moved to, and how it was going to affect the actual through traffic over there, because the reason why I moved was for my children, so I wanted to make sure that we wouldn't have to be rezoned again, as we did in Antioch, and that we could still have a good neighborhood. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name is David Bill, 2822 Silver Springs. We just moved over from Evergreen Farms over to this area because of that reason. All the apartments that were closer up towards Coles, up on St. Andrews. We lived there for approximately 10 years, and we noticed the crime significantly jump. We've witnessed it firsthand, and we chose to move further away from crowded areas so we can get away from all that stuff, and it just seems like it's following us if they put big apartments back there. And it's also gonna add to the traffic. I drive for Nabisco, and I leave that Publix, and usually my next stop on a Monday is Memorial Kroger, and that's a 45-minute drive to go from that Publix to the Kroger Memorial due to the, and most of my time is spent on 99. And, let's see, and traffic, crime, and eyesore. We were hoping for single-family behind us, so we can, you know, we don't have to see three-story buildings in, at our backyard, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Young.
Ms. Ealy, Ms. Green, excuse me. This track along here that backs up to Anthem Way, is that RS-12?
It is. It's zoned RS-12.
Okay, and that's not part of any of this application?
It's not a part of this application or any requests we've received.
I wanna get that. Ms. Green, is the proposed entrance to this on St. Andrews, and I see no corresponding cut-throughs in any of the neighborhoods in this?
There are no streets that deaden into the property, and the access to the residential portion of the property will be from St. Andrews Drive. The access to the commercial portion of the property will be from New Salem Highway.
Do you have any plans to cut through that RS-12 in the future into this apartment complex proposal?
The RS-12 of Silver Springs Court, I guess you can see from the map, you see there's a gap between it, and there's, we expect for Silver Springs Court to continue through that RS-12 tract and connect when that RS-12 property is developed, but I'm not certain that there would be any other connection into that multi-family property.
It doesn't look like there would be, because there's no streets that are corresponding with that.
No, I don't think so.
So it'd be a single entrance project?
We may, we, of course, encourage and request that there be more than one entrance into development. And so what I would guess from my years of reviewing plans is that we would probably have a second entrance as a crash gate to the north through the commercial property adjacent to the commercial property, but I don't see how that would go through the RS-12 property.
Okay. Where are we on the development of 99? I think the council got a letter the other day about moving the project up and doing something with the state. Could you elaborate on that for us?
Not, I haven't read the letter, but I do know that it is in TDOT's plans to improve this portion of New Salem Highway, and when we've reviewed the site plans for any properties along New Salem Highway, we have them look at construction plans and make sure that the development corresponds with that. I might ask Ms. Ray Lott if he knows anything about that letter that you received.
Yes, our mayor and Mayor Burgess have both signed the letter to our Commissioner of Transportation asking that the segment of the Salem Highway from Interstate 24 westward be moved up on the schedule. It was moving along real well, and then with the transportation bill and Congress, it kinda got out of schedule. They're trying to get it back. Our administration is doing what it can to get this back on track. Mr. Richardson is almost working daily on that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ealy, what kind of buffering is going to be required between the RM-16 and the residential, single-family portions?
The RM-16 property would be required to have a buffer along its southern and western property lines. That would be a type C buffer, which would be 12 feet wide, and it would be planted with evergreen materials, and possibly it could include a fence. Adding a fence would not decrease the width of that buffer, but it could change the way the, way that it's landscaped, but that would be required to be opaque. And we certainly, when reviewing any plans, would not allow parking lots to shine into backyards. We're very sensitive to that, and we, the Commission has a history of not approving plans or allowing plans to shine headlights in the back of people's single-family homes.
The fence requirement would be required at site plan approval process, correct?
It would. We would review that at site plan.
Ms. Akers, did you like to add anything? I thought you looked like you needed to say something.
So I was just gonna say that the larger parcel that we're zoning to multi-family, please understand that can be two-family, that could be townhomes. You know, we don't have an end user at this time, and we would have to come back for site plan approval. And the Wheelands live in the area, so obviously they have a stake in the community as well, and we would ensure that it would be developed, you know, according to staff. We're not opposed to an increase of a buffer along that south property line either. We could go to a type D.
Okay. Any members of the Planning Commission?
One more question from Ms. Green.
From Ms. Akers?
Oh, I'm sorry. None from Ms. Akers.
Thank you, Ms. Akers. Mr. Young?
How many units could be developed into this? Was it 260?
Excuse me, with the correction in the acreage, that'd be 116 multi-family units.
Is that, is that considering the green space and the road space and the...
That would be the maximum amount that could be built based upon a strict application of 16 units per acre.
So 116?
116.
Okay.
That's based upon the revised acreage that she mentioned to me.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Mr. Ray Lott, can you carry us figures regarding schools, and I know we've looked at that a lot lately, but from apartment complexes?
Yes, the staff working with Rutherford County and City Schools did a study earlier this year. It was given to the Plan Commission. You all may recall, we made a presentation at council as well. The study shows that multi-family housing has a much, dramatically much lower number of students per dwelling unit than residential, single-family. The, it seems like it was in the order of something like 8% or 1 in 8, or something like that, versus 41% by the single-family. So it's dramatically lower. Of course, there'd be more units in a smaller area. The numbers of students, I noticed what she was saying, the schools are at capacity out there. The City Schools is building a school right now. It's under construction, and I guess that's the overall elementary that will be built to the north off of Veterans Parkway that will be intended to serve this area. I will tell you that every month, the permits are showing that the Scales Elementary School Zone is issuing more permits than, dramatically more than any other school zone in the city. And that has been consistent for several, quite a number of months. I'm not sure exactly what it was this month, or last month, but I would expect that of the 49 single-family permits issued, I would expect that fully 35 of them were built in the Scales Elementary School Zone. So there is a need for more school.
But the school, I was just gonna say, the school that's being built and planned to open in August of '14 is about 1,000 student capacity.
That's my understanding. Yes, sir.
Chairman Lamb, Ms. Green, just to refresh my memory, the lot, I guess that's to the north of the proposed commercial fringe, is it, I'm assuming, commercial fringe now?
It's currently zoned commercial fringe.
Okay.
And so the request is only for that sliver.
I'll check out these maps. This is what's not, if they want.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Joseph, let me ask you, the piece that, behind the purple, the long strip that Doug asked about early on, that's staying in RS-12, do you know how much space that is, the size of that rectangle is?
I would say it's probably in the order of 15 to 20 acres, extended from Salem Highway southward. It was, we've seen a master plan for that property for a street that would run right through the middle of it to the north. I believe if you look, unfortunately, our label for the RS-15, the commercial, to commercial fringe, sits right over a street that stubs into that tract.
Okay.
And it's sort of got an elbow there that turns into, so it's expected that that street will extend into a cul-de-sac up there, or into another elbow, and will allow for a north-south street, and then for Silver Springs Court to extend over to the Bell Haven subdivision. And that is gonna be single-family lots on both sides of that street.
So for the folks that are on Anthem Way and that piece of Silver Springs, they've got a 15 to 20-acre buffer of single-family residences that could be built between them and the apartment.
That is my expectation, and we've seen a plan for, a master plan for that.
But now, the houses that basically back up to it down on that southern end, that they're like the ones that back up off of the back of United and Aristocrat, that's where we'd probably need to worry about the buffer being a little more intense, wouldn't we?
Well, Ms. Green, I think we need to worry about both, because although there is not houses there today, there will be someday.
Right.
And I think we need to be, I think we need to be careful about arrangement structures and buffering. But today, yes, there are houses that, right there off of that part of Silver Springs Court that exist, and it is in their immediate backyard.
Okay, and lastly, you had mentioned that the total number of units now is in the 120?
116 is the number. You add the single-family lots, it'd probably be a total of 120.
Okay, and because now what we had in the packet when it was initially listed 16 and a half acres, it was 260, so...
260.
Under the zoning classification area could be developed.
May I offer the Planning Commission members a big apology? I think I forgot to carry my 1, it's 216.
Okay.
216 to 260.
Okay, so it's going down by that, taking the three acres off, four and a half acres, drops it by 100. That's where my, I was trying to figure out how reducing...
Drops it from 260 to 216.
Right, that is, that's correct.
That's right. And that's where I was trying to figure out how we were losing 100 dwelling units off of that.
In my quick math, I wrote it down, and I forgot to carry my 1.
So it's reducing by about 40, 44 lot, or dwelling units. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. That's it.
How many times you do that, Ms. Ray Lott?
It happens more and more. Usually Mrs. Green catches me.
It's a little satisfying for us to see that. Okay. Any other questions for the staff? If there's no further questions, we're ready for our motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions or discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request for the three separate rezonings.
Recommend approval to the City Council.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now just for information for those that are in the audience that came up and spoke against this, this will go as a recommendation for approval to City Council. The City Council will hold another public hearing about the same matter before they will vote on it, so you'll have another opportunity to come back up and express your opinion for the City Council at a future date, to be determined, okay? Thank you very much for coming tonight. Second public hearing tonight is an annexation petition for approximately 462 acres along Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway. Mr. Bill Rowan, on behalf of Rucker Donnell Foundation is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider the adoption of a plan of services and feasibility study for property located along both Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway. The property is shown in the blue hatched area on the map before you. This map also gives you some additional information. Map shows you an area shaded green, which is the current city limits. I think on the screen, it looks more bright yellow with a green border. That area is currently in Murfreesboro city limits. The area that's pale yellow and extends over the majority of the map is the city's urban growth boundary, and so that's the, those are the properties that are within Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary, which does include these parcels. And the area that is in the orange hatched area is an area that's currently in litigation. Several years ago, the city of Murfreesboro studied the annexation of a large area, including those parcels and further to the north, and passed an ordinance to annex those properties. That ordinance is not, has not become effective yet, is currently held up in our courts, and I can't give you status of that, because I don't know where it is in courts, but I do often get questions from folks asking about that. So that's the information that's on the map before you, but the properties which are being studied for annexation are the properties only shaded blue. And that is 462 acres located again along Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway, with the Rucker Donnell Foundation as the property owners. This annexation study does include approximately 8,000 linear feet of New Salem Highway right-of-way. It also includes approximately 2,000 linear feet of Veterans Parkway right-of-way. Currently Veterans Park, this section of Veterans Parkway is not located in city limits. However, the city has an agreement with the county, of course, to construct the road, but also to maintain it. So we're currently maintaining that section of Veterans Parkway as it stands today. If this annexation is approved as requested, the city will then begin to maintain that approximately 8,000 linear feet of New Salem Highway right-of-way, which is about 23.3 acres. Entire study area is 462 acres. It's a large area. All these, all the property within the study area is owned by and made by the request of property owners, the Rucker Donnell Foundation. Nobody is included in this annexation that did not request it. I've gotten several phone calls from people wanting to know if their properties were part of this. This annexation study only includes parcels for which a petition for annexation has been submitted, and copy of that petition is included in the plan of services that you have in your packet. Property does have some frontage to, of course, along both those streets and along Thompson to the south, however, none of Thompson is being included in this study. The properties are all located within Murfreesboro city lim, or within the Murfreesboro urban growth boundary. They are contiguous with current city limits along the eastern property line. Annexing the properties as proposed does not require us to annex any additional parcels, only the requested parcels. It appears that the city will be able to provide services according to the plan of services that you have before you. There are no residents or any homes currently within this area. It's all vacant land, so we don't expect to have much of an immediate impact, but as development occurs, many of the services will be the responsibility of the developer to extend, and those would be services such as water, sewer, and streetlights, and that will happen as development occurs. You've been given a plan of services, and I did note when we were talking about property size and acres, that the size of the property in plan of services differs from the staff comments. We'll get Mr. Lewis to correct the plan of services. I believe his number is included, the entirety of a parcel, which it should not have. So before it goes to City Council, we'll make sure that we get this plan of service, the acreage and the plan of services corrected to that 462 acres. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council regarding this plan of services. If any questions, I'll be glad to answer them before or after the public hearing. Mr. Taylor is representing the applicants, and he's here this evening. I believe he's prepared a presentation for the zoning matter, which will be the subject of the next public hearing, but he doesn't... of the next public hearing, but he doesn't have a presentation regarding the annexation. However, he'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from Mr. Taylor before we open the public hearing? Any questions from Ms. Green before we open the public hearing? This public hearing is pertaining to the annexation only, not the zoning of the property. So at this time, I will open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak pertaining to the annexation of this proposed property. Anybody at all?
I live at 9081 Concord Road in Rockville, and having served for some 15 years on the county planning commission, I'm concerned about the annexation of property out Highway 99 because I think it's going to occur as it has occurred in other corridors running into Murfreesboro, to where the city has gone out and annexed and it allowed developers to build multiple-family dwellings, which is going to put a burden on the infrastructure. Currently, Highway 99 is gridlocked, and that was mentioned to you earlier. I went fishing on Wednesday of last week. I left my home at, in Rockville Concord Road. It took me 40 minutes, 40 minutes, to get to the exit on 99 to the interstate. So does that tell you that Highway 99 is gridlocked? Yesterday morning, I got a call from a gentleman who was traveling to Murfreesboro. The traffic going to the Rockville Elementary School at 7:30 in the morning was backed up all the way to Armstrong Valley Road. That's 2.6 miles, 2.6 miles from the school. Stop-and-go traffic. And then the gentleman was continuing on toward the interstate exit on 99, and the traffic was backed up to Kason Lane. When the light changed at Kason Lane, he could not go forward because the traffic was backed up all the way to Kason Lane. From Kason Lane to the exit off of 99 onto the interstate is two miles. So you can understand how gridlocked is, and I'm concerned about infrastructure. If this is annexed, we're going to have developers coming in here building multifamily complexes, and it's going to overload not only the highway, but it's going to overload the school system. And the Rockville High School, I'm told by the school board, will be the next high school built in this county. And that may be three, four, five years down the pipe, but if Highway 99 is not improved to a five-lane improved highway by that time, it would be very difficult for people to get anywhere on 99. It is gridlocked now, believe me. So I'm opposed to the objection, or to the annexation of this property until such time as infrastructure presents itself and a solution to that is presented to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Thank you for your service on the county planning commission, too. Anybody else?
I live down on 6015 Highway 99. My property is the southwesternmost property that will border the proposed annexation. And I'd like to just piggyback on what Mr. Ferris has to say. In the mornings and afternoons, between Scales Elementary, Riverdale High School, Rockville Elementary, and Rockville Middle School, and Eagleville High School, you can't, I can't get out of my driveway, sometimes five to six, seven minutes. Traffic is bumper-to-bumper, two to three miles long in either direction. This morning, we just had a major accident, I believe off of Concord, with a school bus...
Thompson Road and 99.
Thompson Road and 99, a school bus. Car pulled out and hit the side of the school bus and another car. Fortunately, nobody was killed. I'm not opposed to much to the annexation as I am, I agree with what Mr. Ferris has to say, we've got to get 99 fixed first. It can't be a two-lane road. The infrastructure cannot handle, and I know a lot of it's going to be proposed for multifamily dwellings. You put apartment complex or multifamily dwellings up and down that highway, it's not going to work. You're not going to be able to get in and out of there. So that, I believe, really, I think he, this gentleman has said it well, we need to take care of the infrastructure first before you go forward with any kind of annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Anybody else?
Name is Joel Powers. I'm at 5300 Old Salem Road. I'm just across the street on Old Salem Road from where this is located, and I would attest to what both these gentlemen have said. I get in and out of that area numerous times daily, and I'm fortunate to work on the west side of I-24, so I don't have to cross over all that, but there's no good path to get around in that area. If you go down St. Andrews in the morning, you get down to about two apartments before the McDonald's right there, and it's backed up. Kason Lane is a problem with traffic. Rucker Lane's just dangerous when there's no traffic on it. And I know this is coming, but I agree with what they've said, that infrastructure should be put in place first. I really can't understand why the city wouldn't annex it at this point, but there certainly needs to be an infrastructure put in place before all this takes place.
Thank you, sir. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from members of the planning commission?
Joseph, a lot of this all comes back to when 99 widening is going to be completed, and I know we don't have the answer to that, and I know this may bleed over into the zoning request as opposed to the annexation itself, but as far as traffic is concerned and developing it, the requirements of traffic flow and that sort of thing with developing the property, does it need to wait before it actually develops till Highway 99 is widened? Can you address that for us?
That's not an easy yes or no question. A couple of things occur to me that I think do need to be considered by the planning commission on this annexation that revolve around infrastructure. Part of what a municipality does is, it does construct infrastructure. Murfreesboro, if you look at what Murfreesboro has done in terms of road building, Murfreesboro is probably one of the largest building municipalities in the state. Well, probably, well, no, it's not probably, it is the largest building municipality in the state. We spend more money to build roads than any other city in the state in the last 10 years. We've got a capital plan where we expect to spend a lot more on upgrading roads, and a lot of it is on the west side of, or most of it is on the west side of Interstate 24. We're not talking about tens of millions, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. When the city takes on annexation, we take on responsibility. We know that, we accept that. That's part of what cities do. One of my concerns is that when we talk about traffic out here, this isn't just city residents, and it's not being enabled just by the city of Murfreesboro. The traffic that's being experienced, particularly the eastbound traffic that's being experienced around the Rockville Elementary School, it's predominantly people who reside from the unincorporated areas who are traveling into town to the areas. So we built those roads to help bypass some of that. That's what Veterans Parkway is all about. Veterans Parkway was not built to entitle someone or have someone to develop property. It was developed as part of our major thoroughfare plan on how we manage traffic, and it was built so that people who are coming into town, who are headed to the interstate in particular, have a way to bypass the interior traffic. Schools, same way. When we see growth coming, our departments, our city schools, they're inspected schools. Fire protection, the same way. We build the infrastructure, we see it coming. So the annexation is, I think it's, in some respects, development-neutral, because I believe that if the city says, no thanks, we just want to annex it now, that will not stop development from taking place on this property. Because Rutherford County has a comprehensive plan that calls for a higher intensity development around the perimeter of the city of Murfreesboro, particularly in its urban growth boundary, than other parts of the county. They view, Rutherford County, when it adopts this growth plan, called this a suburban/urban area, and the area around the city outside the city limits should be general urban in character. The county has already told us that's what they're going to do if we, if they are the stewards of the development outside the city in that area. That's what we already know. So the question becomes, do we allow the county to be the steward of that, or do we take it down? We already have sewer in the area. If we say we're not going to annex it, the next question will be, will we serve it as an outside-the-city sewer customer? And I believe that we would. We have sewer capacity, we have a special assessment, we're going to charge to those who step onto that sewer to offset our cost, just like the Buchanan Sewer. We would rather see that area develop on sewer than the city develop on septic tanks or step systems. Quite simply put, not annexing does not stop development. It may decide upon who will be the stewards of that development. Now, the way the state laws are currently written, if the, and when it comes to annexations, the city is hamstrung. We can't, we can't annex for our own initiative, we have to, we let people petition us for annexation. The state made a very determined decision last year to put annexations on hold unless property owners petition the city for annexation, with the meaning that if a property owner wants in the city, and that's what they want, then why not let them? So we have two elements here. The property owner wants to be in the city, and we have a reason for it to become in the city. So that's the matter of the annexation. Now, the matter of zoning, we're going to talk about it different, it's going to be a different matter. Once it's in the city, I think we have a very much of an obligation to be planning for infrastructure. We're planning and working on the road improvements out there right now, and I see that's something that our city is doing on an ongoing project, but I don't see the Rutherford County government putting that kind of effort into their infrastructure that is obviously needed in that area today. And in fact, what they have done in some respects is what we are trying to avoid inside the city. They have cloaked the road with a school zone, and forevermore, there will be a school zone that will impact the traffic flow around the Rockville Elementary and the school campuses they have developed. We'll live with it, and everyone else will, but we don't want to do that again. When we start talking about the overall school, one of our transportation priorities was, don't put it on the Veterans Parkway in a way that's going to hamstring our traffic management. We don't want to do a school, a single elementary, and single high, and single middle again. So that's my message to you as a plan director. This area needs to be annexed. It's an area we can annex, we have the ability to serve it, they want in, we have an obligation.
If there's no other questions, we're ready for our motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, or recommend approval for this annexation request.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing is a zoning application for the same property, approximately 274.7 acres to be zoned commercial highway, and approximately 60.49 acres to be zoned RM16 simultaneously with annexation along Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway, and approximately 3.12 acres to be rezoned from RS15 to commercial highway along Armstrong Valley Road. Mr. Bill Rowland, on behalf of the Rucker Donnell Foundation is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is somewhat of a companion to the previous agenda item, as it's a request to change the zone for some of the properties included in the annexation study. The subject's properties are located along Salem Highway, southwest of Veterans Parkway, includes the same property considered earlier on the agenda for annexation, with the exception of some parcels. The request is to zone the area shaded orange, CH, Commercial Highway District, simultaneous with its annexation, and that area shaded orange is approximately 274 acres. The request also includes, the zoning change request also includes the area shaded blue, which the property owners are requesting to be zoned RM16 simultaneous with its annexation, and that's 60.49 acres. The CH zone is Commercial Highway District, and it's a zoning district that you typically see along highways or corridors in our community. The RM16 district is a multifamily residential district, and it allows single-family detached and attached dwellings by right, allows multifamily dwellings by right, and various institutional group assemblies and institutional-type uses. The zoning change also includes a portion of property that's currently located within Murfreesboro city limits, and it was not part of the annexation study in the previous agenda item, as it's already within Murfreesboro city limits. That's the area shaded orange, or, sorry, it's the area shaded purple, and it's a very small area when you're looking at this map, and the label is RS15 to CH. That property is currently zoned RS15, and was zoned RS15 when it was annexed, so that it could be developed. The city's fire station is located on the property. That property is 3.12 acres, and that fire station was, property was annexed and zoned such in 2007. The remainder of the property that you may recall from the annexation study that's to the south but not included on this map, has not had a companion zoning change request. So per our zoning ordinance, that property will come into an interim zoning of RS15, single-family residential district, with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet per the lot. There are other types of uses that are permitted by special use permit within the RS15 district, and that would be an interim zone. This tract is also located within the Salem Pike Land Use Study area, and that feature land use map in the study depicts the frontage of the tract along Salem Highway to be used for mixed use, including offices, commercial, and high-density residential, with a more intense commercial node at the intersection with Veterans Parkway. Remaining of the tract to the south is proposed to be used for medium-density residential uses. And there are several limitations that are on the property as they currently exist, and they include a significant lake or pond and a bar open on the property. Mr. Taylor is going to introduce the property and go through the details of the current exists, the existing limits on the property, and in addition, he'll outline the reasons for the request of the zoning change by the Rucker Donnell Foundation. There is a program book that was included in the PDF, and that, Mr. Taylor will also go through that program book that outlines some design standards that they are proposing to comply with. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing after Mr. Taylor's presentation and forward, and make a recommendation that you will forward to city council if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at any time, but this time, I'll invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, good evening, and I do have a brief present, I'll try to keep a brief presentation about the property. I am Matt Taylor of SEC here in Murfreesboro. I'm accompanied tonight by a couple of the trustees of the foundation, Mr. Rick Mansfield, as well as Mr. Kent Burklo. We do have a, they do have a third trustee, Mr. Bill Rowland, but he was not able to be here tonight. And we're also accompanied by Mr. John Harney of the Parks Group here in town, and he was, he's been assisting on the real estate side of the property. I do want to start by introducing you to the foundation. I don't think it's as well-known as some of our other charitable organizations in town. It's a fairly young organization, only about 10 years old. It was established by Mr. Jim Donnell in the early 2000s. Mr. Donnell was a cotton farmer in the Rockville area. He split time between here and Mississippi where he lived with his wife. He established this foundation with a mission to operate exclusively for the charitable, educational, religious, scientific, and literary purposes, and to benefit such items. He did name a couple of beneficiaries that he felt like captured that mission, that being the Salem United Methodist Church in the Rockville community, as well as the Martin Methodist College in Pulaski, Tennessee. Upon Mr. Donnell's passing in 2003, the foundation inherited their only asset, which was about 650 acres of farmland inside of the Rockville community. Since that time, the foundation's taken the time to get to know their beneficiaries. They benefited the church through some restoration efforts at their facility on Old Salem, as well as they made some... well as they made some end kind donations to the college. In addition to their named beneficiaries, the foundation participated with the city on Veterans Parkway through some right-of-way donation as well as some design fees, and they also participated with the Fire Hall through donation of land there. So Mr. Donnell left enough flexibility inside of the foundation's guidelines that if its trustees identifies a third-party organization that meets and operates according to their mission, they're able to donate to them and, and benefit those organizations as well. Now, the organization, foundation's entering its second decade in existence, they've identified the need to allow its, their assets, the land, to reach their full potential. Otherwise, they will never be able to fully meet Mr. Donnell's vision and mission, and that's why we're here tonight. That's what our proposal is about. The site itself is along Highway 99. It's bisected by Highway 99, actually. We do have a little bit of property to the north, the bulk of the property's to the south of 99. It extends along Veterans all the way over to Armstrong Valley Road and as far south as Thompson Road. The area in pink here is about 450 acres. The foundation does have approximately 650 as it's under its total ownership. As was previously discussed, the property is located along one of the more recently developed corridors in the city. We have multiple residential subdivisions located to the east, Weston Park, Southern Meadows, Three Rivers, just to name a couple. In addition to single-family offerings, the same corridor has introduced commercial applications in each of Weston Village as well as Three Rivers for a mixed-use type field there, as well as commercial, commercially dedicated areas such as the Public Shopping Center as well as some other multifamily users in Westbury Farms, all those located at St. Andrews and Highway 99. In addition to just a good location, it does have good access to Veterans Parkway, gives its readily available access back over to 96 and 840 further to the north there. Veterans Parkway also offers easy access back over to the city's Barfield Park as well as 231, and in the very near future, be able to access Joby Jackson and go over to Manchester Highway and ultimately John Bragg Highway. The site itself is a mixture of covers of open field to heavy vegetation. That heavy vegetation's concentrated around some of the natural characteristics of the site, one of those being Puckett Creek on the north side of Salem Highway. There's an existing pond on the south side in the, kind of the heart of the development there where we have another heavy concentration of tree areas, as well as on the, at the southern reaches of the property back along Thompson Road. The site itself drains primarily to the west and north into Puckett Creek. There is a small portion of the site that drains to the east into Armstrong Branch before it's confluence back into Puckett Creek. And then the site does have good access to utilities. We've got sewer along Puckett Creek, we've got sewer along Veterans, we've got water along Salem Highway and Thompson Road, and we've got electrical service along those same routes as well. Even with all the good of the site, there are some limitations on site, just as with any. The first and largest is the floodplain of Puckett Creek. It's over 50 acres in size and located primarily on the north side of Highway 99, which will restrict any development on that side. Inside that floodplain is a further restricted area, the water quality protection area. We have 50 feet along any streams, that one being along Puckett Creek that will have to, basically is off, off limits to development. We can't, we can't cross with utility or greenways, things like that. Other than that, it will remain open space for perpetuity. On the south side, we've got a over 17 acre pond. We don't believe that can be removed or mitigated due to its location, size, surrounding topography. That's going to have to be something that's incorporated into any design, and we think it'll be a natural stormwater feature for any ultimate development here. In the southwest corner of the property, we do have a almost 19 acre old abandoned quarry. That was active during the construction of Highway 99 but was left in such a shape after that construction that it can't economically be developed any further, we don't believe. Now, on the very southern tips of the property, here we encounter some very extreme slopes as well as a lot of rock outcropping. They'll make any development there likely uneconomical and keep that area open space as well. All told, we have over 107 acres approximately of land of our total requested area that is impaired or limited in some fashion for any future development. The request itself, the annexation previously studied, our, our area was about 450 acres. The rezoning is for approximately 335 acres. Of that 335, about 275 acres of that was requested as commercial highway. The remaining 60.5 was a multifamily development. Keep in mind that each of those are impaired, the commercial highway's impaired by about 86 acres of that limitation and the multifamily by approximately eight acres. The lines here are curved, angled, turned in nature. It wasn't done by accident. We spent many months at the first part of our project here studying those limitations, characteristics of the project. We consulted with Mr. Ailot on appropriate land uses. He guided us back toward the Salem Land Use Plan. And then finally, we also looked at some preliminary traffic management studies and decided where access points should be so as not to further limit any development of possible signals in the future along that corridor. Out of all that study, we came up with our preliminary master plan, and that was the guiding force behind our zoning plan that you, that we've presented to you. And finally, we did reach out to our neighbors before we made any application to the city. We felt like as a charitable organization, foundation, we should take that extra step before getting here. August 20th, we held a neighborhood meeting at Skales Elementary, where we mailed out about 600 letters, had about 60 participants at that meeting, had some good dialogue. Some people liked parts of the plan, some people wanted everything to remain open, others were just happy that we invited them, let them know that something was potentially coming. Out of that meeting, we did make some revisions to the plan. We removed any of the area requested that touched Old Salem Highway. There was some concerns that may be premature, so we took a step back and removed all that area. There were some requests for open space, so we made an effort to further define the limitations on the property to show where that open space may, may permanently be in the future. And then there were some questions about the foundation's intentions in general. So we hope through the, our booklet as well as this presentation, we further define that the foundation's only intention is to fulfill their mission that was given by Mr. Donnell before his passing. I'll be available for any questions as well as any of the rest of the design team.
Any Planning Commission members have questions?
Mr. Taylor, so you're telling us about 25% of this whole parcel is not going to be able to be used?
Well, the floodplain will be able to be used in a limited manner. We'll be able to, you can fill in part of that, but you also have to show that you're not, you basically have a no net increase, or we have to go to the effort and expense of defining a floodway, which would further impair the property along the creek as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Aila, clarification, could you define floodway and floodplain?
Yes, sir. The floodplain is the area along the creek that you can develop in, but you have to raise the floor elevation to at or above the flood elevation if it's commercial, or one foot above if it's residential. Within that area is the floodway. It's the area that has to remain unobstructed. No development can take place in the floodway. So the, it's a area that's right around the stream channel that has been calculated by FEMA to be required that we manage it as open. We, we cannot allow development to take place, and we monitor that very closely. We look at it on every site plan and on every subdivision plot that comes through.
Thank you. I wanted to put a benefit of.
Mr. Taylor, thank you very much.
I got one question. Mr. Taylor, looking at the booklet that's in our, okay, so the south side of New Salem Highway is, right next to it is, is zone, or you're proposing commercial highway, but when you look further into the packet, it talks about that there would, there's some 36 acres that would be used for offices.
Well, that, yes, sir.
Okay.
You're referring to the preliminary master plan?
I am.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, right now, that's your plan with respects to the, not the majority, but a big portion of that commercial highway area, correct?
Yes, sir. We're, we kind of envisioned that being an office park, similar to kind of what was around maybe the Gateway Island there, that you've got this water feature in the middle and then surrounded by offices, but it could be any number of uses there, but we would
By zoning it commercial highway, we're, we're not defining it in that fashion, correct?
Correct.
And that's your question? Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking him to come forward, that'd
My apologies, the Planning Commission, I'm not making enough copies for everybody, so you might have to share. My name again is Rick Womack. My property is 6015 Highway 99. It borders the southwesternmost area of the proposed annexation and rezoning. If you look at what I've handed out to you on the front page there, in yellow is my property, highlighted in yellow, and then the little area in red is what, and by the way, the Rucker Donnell Foundation, thank you very much, you did reach out to the community, do appreciate everything they've done, but there are some problems and there's some disagreements. If you look at that red area, which Mr. Taylor pointed out was a rock quarry, it is not a rock quarry, never has been. A permit was given by Rutherford County to Mr. Danny Dill, who used that property as resource extraction, i.e., he dug the dirt out of it and sold the dirt. So what we have is a huge hole of about eight to 10 acres. Prior to him digging, the water from the Clear Ridge subdivision, if you look down, you'll see there, just to the southwest of my property is Clear Ridge, that subdivision was developed so that the water would run off from that subdivision across my property and into the Donnell property and on, on into Puckett Creek down into the Stones River. Ever since Mr. Dill started digging, he dammed it up. The water backs up. If you look at the last two pages that I gave you there, you'll see pictures in 2009 of one of our heavy rains where my property completely flooded. I've had to raise my driveway several feet so it's not underwater. He was supposed to have taken that property, once he finished digging for resource extraction, provide the proper drainage and runoff on into Puckett's Creek and on down to the Stones River. And however that works, don't ask me, I don't know, but that was the agreement by Rutherford County. And it was going to be turned into wildlife refuge, stocked with fish, ducks, geese, et cetera, et cetera. Hasn't been done. I've been after Rutherford County since 2008. This is an email I sent them in 2009. I've visited them several times. They keep losing the entire permit, and they, it's always somebody different that doesn't remember what has happened. I remember, and so do the residents of Clear Ridge subdivision. When it rains and my prop, and that hole in the ground fills up, I've even got a small retaining pond on my property of about four acres, it fills up, it floods my property and starts to flood the subdivision. By you allowing any kind of an area to be rezoned, and that area where that hole in the ground is, is slated to be rezoned as RM16, you put housing or apartment complexes in there, you've created a bigger dam. And guess what, folks, we're coming after you with a lawsuit because you're going to flood my property, you're going to flood the homes, you're going to flood the businesses down there in the front of that property, Greenfire Landscaping, the New Dollar General, Subway, et cetera. Those are going to become real problems when it comes to flooding. Part of the problem too is Highway 99 wasn't properly built, the drain pipes are higher than they need to be to allow the runoff access under the highway and on down into Puckett's Creek. So there's multiple problems with this area. And by you allowing this to be rezoned as RM16 in that area without some kind of assurances that you're going to fix the flooding problem, because Rutherford County refuses to even get involved and hold Mr. Dill, and I believe ultimately the foundation, responsible for this boondoggle, somebody's, bottom line, somebody's going to have to fix it because this, we're at, we're at a point where we're not going to stand by and watch our property be flooded, and then I don't know what's going to happen in this new construction with new rezoning, whatever latitude you're going to give the foundation to build out there. This is a huge problem. They haven't fixed it since 2008, 2009, and here we are at 2013, and they want to go and do whatever they want to do with it now. The problem needs to be fixed, otherwise multiple lawsuits are going to come back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Womack. Who'd like to be next?
My name is Jim Murray. I live at 5868 Montague Avenue in Rockville. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Back in October of 2001, this Murfreesboro Planning Commission adopted the Salem Pike Study Area Land Use Plan, and the plan included a recommended land use map. And in comparing the proposed zoning request to the adopted plan, I noticed that a large percentage of the area requested to be zoned commercial highway is identified in the plan as a mixed-use limited plan development within a scenic corridor overlay. And then the remaining portion of the commercial highway request and the RM16 request are identified in the plan as medium density residential. The plan defines mixed-use limited plan development as medium-density residential, institutional, offices with a maximum 30% floor area ratio, and general farm, and general farming. The plan further identifies the scenic corridor overlay section between Rockville Elementary and Veterans Parkway as a pastoral segment. And according to the plan, the purpose of the pastoral segment is to maintain the openness of Salem Pike as it transitions into the bucolic landscape of the Southwest. In the plan's chapter on community development goals and objectives, goal number one is maintain openness of Salem Pike. And the first objective under this number one goal is to cluster commercial uses within activity nodes as opposed to strip development. Going on to goal six, it is to ensure orderly development, and the first objective under this goal is to ensure that annexation and zoning action promote the use and design recommendations of this plan. And so I'm asking the commission to not recommend this proposed zoning request to council as being contrary to the Salem Pike Study Land Use Plan, and to use this plan as the basis for any future zoning requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I would like to, I've already stated my name and address, and I think everybody knows that, but I would like to express my concern. knows that, but I would like to express my concern about the fact that we have just made a motion to approve the rezoning of this area. And now we are going to -- I mean, the annexation of the area. And now, we're going to just give open zoning application to where they can go in and build multiple-family housing or develop it as they want to, and I've seen that happen for the last 15 to 20 years since I retired from the military and moved back in the area in 1985. To me, and one of the things I emphasized when I served on the county planning commission is that when someone come in with a plan and you rezone the area, there had to be a specific plan presented so that all the people in the surrounding properties had an opportunity to understand what was going to be developed adjacent to their properties. That is not the case here. And I think you're being grossly unfair to the individuals who own property, as this gentleman here over in the Clearview subdivision, which I'm very much aware, I'm very much aware of the Donnell property, I know Mr. Donnell, I know a few things about this issue. And Clearview is going to be flooded unless something is done about this property. So I just definitely oppose to any rezoning application at the same time that you are annexing this property. I think there ought to be a specific plan laid out before any rezoning is approved for the development of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Anybody else?
Again, Joel Powers over on the Old Salem side, so I'm on the north side of that.
Did you state your name again?
Joel Powers.
I'm sorry.
5300 Old Salem. And I'm right across the street from the property there at Puckett Creek. There has been -- I've been out there in the same house for 24 years and since New Salem and all that was built, I've got some of those headlights in my back windows now. But the water issue is also on the north side as well. If we get three and a half to four inches of rain in a three or four day period, water is over Old Salem Road. And if we get five inches or so, which we do usually every spring, it's over Old Salem and the road that turns off right there in the curve over All Creek. You can't get out that way. So if you build something over there with asphalt and all to run more water off in that creek, there's no way that you're going to be able to get in and out of there with even probably, I'd say, two to three inches of rain. So there's an issue on that side as well, just with the water aspect.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Steve Turney, and I'm at the corner of Veterans Parkway and Salem High -- Veterans Parkway and Salem Highway at 3021 Highway 99. What everybody said about the water is a problem. I've got to say, well, let me say, I made the front page of the Daily News Journal back in the 80s for the flood that I had in my front yard. My problem has gotten better water-wise. I always assumed it was because of the engineering that your engineers and guys that make the big bucks did. And that's not to say that they're right. If I get five, seven inches of water, I'm going to have water in my front yard, but it will be gone in eight to 12 hours. I had a friend, we had the -- whatever we had in May of 2010, had a buddy, lived out off South Windrow Road, got flooded out of his house. Said, "Turney, I knew there was a problem when I heard my cars banging on the wall because they were floating." He said, "I just knew for sure you were flooded out." He said, "Once I finally got out of my property, I came down the road," you know, "and you're sitting there high and dry in your house." So I can only say that my water problem has gotten better from that standpoint, and I can only attribute that to the engineering that took place. It may just be lady luck. But the other thing is I am for the commercial zoning just because if they want to stand up, if -- I think the commercial zoning solves your problem with having to educate the kids that come along with all the res -- I do know you have some multifamily in the very back that's along Thompson Lane, but am I wrong in assuming if it's all zoned commercial highway, you're not going to have residential in there? Is that not correct? And so I'm just saying that it looks to me like it solves a lot of problems, you know, and I ain't blowing hot air up your rear end here, but you guys are very great planners. I don't want to do it under your rules because I'm just, I don't, that's just not my cup of tea, but I'm proud to say, I'm from Murphysboro in Rutherford County, the gateway is beautiful, and I see what somebody, Mr. Taylor, said about, you know, well, we envision an office park. I'm very aware of the pond that's back there. I can see fountains shooting out of that thing and buildings overlooking it, just like what's -- I was in a doctor's office today along the gateway, sitting in his office looking out the window, it was beautiful. So I just think when things are professionally planned by the guys that get paid to do that, you hadn't dropped the ball any that I've seen, so that's where I stand. And thank you for hearing.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anybody at all? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Taylor, a lot of comments on flooding, obviously. You know, this area is, a lot of areas of our community are very sensitive to drainage and flooding, and a lot of confusion about zoning and flooding. If we zone it one way, it's going to exacerbate the flooding problems where a lot of times I -- would you address, I think he touched on it a little bit, you know, just because we zone something a certain way may not have any effect on the flooding in the long term, like we just addressed on Memorial Boulevard. It may address the flooding that's in existence right now. Long term, it may correct it down the road quite a bit. You know, we go through this quite a bit. The flooding out there is in existence right now, and I appreciate Mr. Womack's problems right there. He has a definite problem right there that we certainly don't want to cause to be any worse than what it is and anybody else out there in the Salem Pike area. But there's certain things and certain safeguards that development can do and take place that would help the situation that, like Mr. Turney talked about, that would definitely, you know, maybe remedy the situation for many decades to come. Could you maybe touch on that a little bit?
Well, first of all, let me talk a little bit about stormwater management and annexation. We take stormwater management very seriously, and once it's inside the city, it's our responsibility to deal with. So, Mr. Womack, your pictures are very good information for us. When we -- this is brought to our attention, it goes into our files, it's shared with staff, it's something that we will be thinking about as we go about our duties. When plans are brought in, we will review site plans and subdivision plots. Stormwater management is one of the -- there's basically, well, there's a lot of things we look at, but stormwater management and traffic are two of the most sensitive and probably the ones we spend the most time agonizing over. And when I say agonizing over, we spend a lot of time evaluating them, working with the engineers on how to go about designing to, number one, we don't want to make anything worse, and if we know about a problem, we want to look for a way to make it better. If the problem was a natural situation, maybe a stormwater problem that's associated with a syncope, it may be something we can't do a whole lot about. But if it's a man-made situation, it's something that we're going to target for a lot of priority. Water that just sits on somebody's lands is not as high a priority to spend money on, but if water's getting into people's houses, we take that very seriously and it's something that we do want to fix. So during site plan review, we -- and subdivision plot review, we'll be looking at how the stormwater is managed. In addition to the quantities, we're also looking at the quality of it, so that's the second part. The federal government has mandated, and the state, and the federal government through the state has mandated that the cities have these stormwater programs where we look at the quality of it as well as the quantity of it. We collect a stormwater fee on everybody's water bill, so we collect money to spend on drainage projects, so it's something that we do. Plans that are more than one acre, plans that are more than 5,000 square feet of floor area, will come back before the planning commission for site plan review. So when we come to a public hearing like this and participate and share information, it helps us to do our job better. It's going to -- if the planning commission remembers it, it's our job to remember it, but if they bring it up very often when we review these plans. Also, I encourage you, if it's inside the city where the problem is being manifested or being created, contact our office, we want to know about it. We get it onto our logs, we send inspectors out when it's raining, we send people out to look at what the situation is so that we can figure out and formulate a way to address these problems. I know we've got three council members here tonight, and they are constantly referring things to us, as well as our engineering staff are constantly getting back with them about how they're proposing to resolve them. I would say that we've had some very, very good successes on problems dealing with drainage. So, Mr. Lamb and members of the planning commission, this kind of information, we appreciate getting. The photographs of Mr. Womack has, I'm going to keep a copy, I'm going to share with our city engineer, I'll make sure he lays eyes on it tomorrow and becomes aware of where it came from.
What I was trying to say as well is just because, you know, it's, the zoning has changed does not mean it's going to be developed and covered with asphalt and automatically flooded, you know, worse than it is right now. The site plan approval process is quite detailed and quite extensive, and all that stormwater has to be addressed in every way. And the engineers, like the gentleman alluded to, are quite good at detailing what happens to all that water, and much better now than they've ever been. And so hopefully, it will help, you know, correct the situation that you have as well as everybody else out there, whenever it is developed. And it may be many years before it's developed, unfortunately, you're going to have to live with it to then. Mr. Gilli.
Joseph, as far as developing on the property, if there's already flooding issues out there, though, under our standards, anything that's developed can't do anything to exacerbate or make it worse, isn't that correct?
That is correct. And as we review plans, we look for ways to make things better, if we can do that.
As to the area that Mr. Womack was pointing out, that Matt referred to it as a quarry, it's a borrow pit is what it really is, is that correct?
It was a borrow pit, that's correct.
Is that an area that can be filled and developed, or is that part of what Mr. Taylor was saying, that cannot?
He was telling us that it was uneconomical to develop that area. One of the things about land, and just to give you an example, where the target sits today, conventional wisdom was, nobody would fill that hole. The time came when it was economical to do. Of course, it was on 04 Parkway, it was right across from the Walmart, it was right beside Lowe's. It had all the elements of the, that someone was willing to spend a tremendous amount of effort to do. Will the same translate here? I don't know. Today, it's uneconomical. Tomorrow is a long time. Something may change in the future that causes it to be more desirable.
But if that circumstance were to change in the future, they would have to do something to remedy the water problem or the damming effect that Mr. Womack referred to?
Absolutely.
Or they would not be able to get through site plan review to?
Absolutely.
To do that? Okay. And actually having, as you used the term stewardship when talking about the annexation, that actually gives us the ability to monitor and make sure that that occurs, whereas in its current status, the city does not have that opportunity, is that?
That's correct. If it's not in the city, we don't have any jurisdiction.
So we would have the opportunity to monitor that and take some corrective actions to bust the dam or whatever it took to move that water.
But that is correct, we would, and it would get into the, one of our programs our city engineer would begin to monitor and look for ways to resolve.
Okay. Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Melber, Mr. Taylor, I thought that Mr. Murray made some pretty good comments with respects to maybe the differences that are outlined in this proposal versus what was part of the original Salem Land Use Plan. Can you address some of the comments that he made and the differences that are outlined here that you would deem either positive or negative?
The, in fact, there is a, there is a copy of the, a black and white copy of the Salem Land Use map in your materials, and it would be somewhere around page 51 on your iPad, if you were to be looking for it. The area around the intersection with Veterans Parkway was identified as a neighborhood commercial note, and it was expected to be developed commercially. That was, that was a given. The area that fronted along the Salem Highway to a depth of, and I'm going to approximate here, but to a depth of 800 to 1,000 feet was in a mixed-use district. And it encouraged development to be done as a plan development, if that was to be the choice, but it envisioned that it could be a mixture of uses, including a multifamily as well as commercial, as well as offices. It didn't say it has to be residential, it didn't say that it has to be a pastoral setting with just open space and horse paddocks. Instead, it really sought to look at more of a design. As we see the developments come through, we want to see an open space in the front. We don't want to see the buildings pushed up to the minimum set-back line. We don't want to see a landscape that's devoid of, or rather, we don't want to see parking lots and sites that are devoid of landscaping in the front. We want to see meaningful landscaping in the front. The plan that is before you for zoning is not in and of itself inconsistent with the Salem Pike Land Use Plan in the sense of design, because today, we don't know what the design is. That'd be something that's later. In terms of uses permitted, it's not inconsistent there. I will tell you that I feel that the intensity is a little bit beyond what I'd expected. The depth off of Salem Highway for the mixed-use is a little bit greater than I had expected when I compared with the plan. But one of the things about the Salem Pike Land Use Plan that in retrospect, it may be a little bit of a flaw is, it depicts a very linear mixed-use corridors through I've had people that I've talked with in viewing their plans and reviewing the Salem Pike Land Use, that they try to interpret that as almost a strip type of development. And that's, that's not what we want. We want to see more of these campus-type developments. When these applicants came to me and began to talk about development, I wanted to sort out a very good traffic management program. One of the things that has happened in our community since the time that the Salem Pike Land Use Plan was developed was, we've enhanced our landscaping requirements, particularly for the large sites. We went to a greater landscaping requirement. We have a greater amount of parking that's required for our typical sites. We have a much more aggressive and much more demanding stormwater management program. So those are things that we didn't, we didn't really have to the standards we do today when we adopted that plan. Often, those things come in the front of development. The stormwater management, particularly if it drains to the north, the stormwater manager is going to be on the front. Think of the apartments beside the Publix. They put a stormwater detention area in the front, which was sort of what we talked about with the Salem Pike, to put the buildings further back and keeping an open space in the front, and that's what they did. So when the development takes place on this property, we'll be looking at that standard. I will, again, say that this is maybe a little bit on the intense end, but I really encourage people never to come with a low-intensity plan if they have aspirations for their property, to come in with a more intense plan, dream a little bit big, the process may bring them back to earth, so to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. That would be kind of exactly along the lines of what I wanted to comment on. If we look like on page 65 in our plan book on the iPad, I mean, I like the master plan look, I like, you know, that seems like a very I like, you know, that seems like a very reasonable plan for, for the area, but I'm not comfortable at all with blanket zoning of 274 acres to a commercial highway, even if you do intend maybe to put some offices on it or to put some retail here and there and to have some, you know, the scattered uses through there. I mean, I like the general plan, but I'm not comfortable, and I think that's kind of where, where we're going with that, the other comments that were made earlier, just not comfortable with the full everything except the section for the RM16 just being a blanket commercial highway. I wouldn't be comfortable with that at all.
I did discuss with the applicants the possibility that after the public hearing and after some amount of discussion, that it may be one of those things we wanted to defer action on, come back during a day meeting and work on some more. They chose the more permissive route of, of commercial highway, knowing that they could build something less intense if that were the, the opportunity that came. But at the same time, they discussed, well, it may be that we, we, we come back and refine our plan just a little bit. I, I think that the discussion on the Land Use Plan and the one that you talked about on page 65, it's, it has some very compelling elements to it. It seems to have some, some logic to it that I don't think is as frightening to you as the large amount of commercial highway that you're, you're seeing.
Oh, yeah.
Mrs. Jones, are you leaning toward recommending a deferral?
If, if they'd like to come back with something a little more, yes, I would, I would prefer a deferral.
Now, then, you have a comment for Mr. Taylor?
I would be object to that.
Okay.
Also, you'll give us a little, I don't know if, how we can help Mr. Womack immediately other than the fact that it is annexation, but I want that addressed at a different, not, not in what she's, I'm out of tax, I'm out of context right now. I'm sorry.
Mr. Young, what we'll do, we will endeavor to have our engineering department to reevaluate that part of our annexation feasibility to the drainage and hopefully be prepared to give you maybe a little bit of an insight at our next Plan Commission meeting. If, if our agenda is not too awful long, we should be able to have a few minutes to discuss that.
Mr. Gilli has a statement.
And Kathy, I think you're exactly right. When you looked at page 65, the potential breakdown, I think if we actually saw a plan where those areas are actually defined with those as opposed to the blanket, I think we'd all be probably a little more comfortable with that, because I mean, that even has the multifamily down to less than 24 acres of, and then the retail space at the 78. I think that's where we're really kind of looking, hoping to, to see rather than just the big masses or blankies you described it.
There's no other comments or questions. Mrs. Jones, would you like to do that?
Yes, I would. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we recommend a deferral on this particular item tonight to hopefully our next, next meeting, or do you want me to leave off the date?
I think we'll be ready for our next day meeting, which will be October 16th.
Motion is voted as their second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
Representative Womack, first of all, I want to thank you for your service as an Air Force pilot. Second, I want to thank you for your service as a state representative. Third, I want you to help us get 99 fixed. Can you help us on that, sir? You keep banging away at them and don't give up, and I know you don't, but help us, sir, please.
They, they say you have a conflict of interest there, so they won't listen to you.
I don't think they'll listen to anybody.
Thank you for coming tonight, though. We'll move on to our next public hearing. That is a signed ordinance amendment regarding the display of temporary flag signs building and coast and the planning staff or the applicants. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. The next public hearing will be to consider amendments to the sign ordinance regarding temporary flags, signs. We have with us Ms. Amelia Kerr. She's going to make a presentation, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Mrs. Kerr, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lamb, members of Plan Commission. Staff is proposing an amendment to the sign ordinance regarding the temporary display of temporary flag signs. Staff has had several inquiries from local churches, schools, and other institutional group assemblies requesting to be able to display multiple flag signs throughout the year. This would be like 4th of July, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, such as that. Currently, our sign ordinance only allows three temporary signs to be on a lot at any given time. The proposed ordinance amendment would allow for unlimited temporary flag signs on a lot for no more than 15 days per year. The size of the flags would not exceed 24 square feet, and they would only be able to be permitted to be displayed non-commercial messages and would only be allowed for institutional group assembly uses as defined in the zoning ordinance. And they would also have to be non-commercial uses. This would also be in addition to the exception that has previously been established for temporary events that have a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm available to answer any questions that you have as well as planning staff.
Ms. Kerr, is an institutional sign a political sign?
An institutional sign.
I mean, is a political sign an institutional sign? Would this, this would not allow political signs?
This is basically for non-commercial, non-commercial, say if it were the American flag at the church, or it has to be at a non-commercial use facility within a institutional group assembly use.
An institutional group assembly use includes schools, it includes churches, it includes fire stations. No, I don't think that's a public building, excuse me, it doesn't include fire stations, but a recreational field could be a institutional group assembly use.
We've had several churches that have approached us requesting to be able to display 10 to 15 flags for seven days at a time period. They are allowed to do it right now by going to BZA. Sometimes that's like a two-month process for them to, to do that, and they come to us two weeks before they want to do it, 4th of July week, and there's no way for us to be able to help them with that. And this is an alternative for us to be able to help them with that.
So it's just on these properties and for their use, or is there, so can the politician make the flag and put it during these 15 days on an institutional use property?
Well, we don't care if a politician makes the flag. It just may be the message that he puts on the, on the flag that might be what counts.
Yes. All our councilmen, they're going to, they cannot put a political message on the sign.
This is not intended to be a way to create a proliferation of political signs.
Okay. That's what I'm making sure.
We don't need any more political signs.
Doug's just thinking ahead to April.
I was thinking of those signs.
Okay. Thank you.
We're thinking about things more like the field of flags.
Any other questions from Mrs. Kerr?
I know that. I should want to let those in, too.
Any other questions from Mrs. Kerr? Okay. Well, now, we have to do a public hearing. We have to open the public hearing first. I'll open the public hearing. I assume that you'd come forward that'd like to speak. Yes, sir?
I was going to say, don't deny my right to speak. I've been sitting here for two hours waiting.
Really?
That's fine. Murphy Ferr is my name. I live at 121 April Lane in Reedville, Tennessee. I'm here tonight because I'm a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church. We're a very patriotic church. Over the 10 or 12 years that I've been a member, we've sent, I don't know how many thousands of dollars' worth of care packages to soldiers in Afghanistan and Iraq and other places as well. We have supported the families of those soldiers who are overseas with Christmas presents and gifts and in many other ways as well. During those specific holidays that someone referenced just a few minutes ago, we in the past have lined our driveway at church with flags in support of those who make this such a great country for us, but were informed last year that we could not do that without the procedure the lady made reference to earlier. And we'd just like to thank Mr. Adalot and the, and the other staff members of the city who have helped propose this exemption to the ordinance for churches and schools and that kind of thing, and we would certainly like your, your support of that amendment, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferr, and thank you for what your organization does. Anybody else like to speak?
Again, my name is Joel Powers. I'm a member of Franklin Road Baptist Church and on staff there. We have a patriotic service annually, and we've put up flags, and we would appreciate you passing this as well. We have gone through this process also since that was put into rule a couple of years or so ago, but it would sure make it a lot easier to not have to do that.
You guys do a great job, too. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
May for approval.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is amendments to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map regarding the GDO Gateway Design Overlay District Regulations and the proposed MU mixed-use district. Mr. Taylor, would you like me to read these one at a time?
No, sir. I'd like to make an introduction first.
Yes, sir.
This first part that we're going to talk about tonight, actually, the remainder of the agenda is all about the gateway and the zoning in the gateway area. First of all, I'd like to tell you that we adopted our current Gateway Design Overlay District Regulations almost 10 years ago. It'll be 10 years ago in January. It's hard to believe that we have had 10 years now that we've been applying these regulations. I don't know the number of projects we've had, but as we can see, when we drive out to Medical Center Parkway, we can see that the area has changed dramatically, and it is now viewed by, in the community, as one of the premier places in our community, and it is viewed by the people who visit our community as one of the nicest places in middle Tennessee. It's an area I'm very proud of, and I think a lot of the reason it is the way it is is because of the regulations we adopted and the review process that we put in place. Now, this area applies both to the area that the city formerly owned, which is the, what we originally called the original gateway, but also to the larger area that extends all the way out to the Interstate 24 interchange and beyond, all the way over across Overall Creek and down Fortress Boulevard. The greater gateway area is a larger area that's applied to these different districts. One of the things that we have found is that with the economy reviving, we're getting a lot more inquiries with some owners of property that has, donors have passed and their children are now looking to sell their property. We're expecting there to be numerous rezoning applications in the future. We've already seen several. We saw applications for the Henley Station for multifamily complex. We saw an application for multifamily beside the Belks Department Store. We've seen, and we'll see, we saw a companion application for a zoning that decided to join with the MU district that I'm going to talk about in a moment. So we know things are fixing to get started out there again, and we want to be prepared. The first public hearing, which is item E on the ordinance, actually, under heading E, is the item of zoning ordinance amendments 2013-802 regarding various amendments to the zone ordinance. And Chairman Lamb, I'm introducing it tonight if you don't mind. That will be our first public hearing, and I want to go right in and talk about this. The MU district, this will be a amendment to our zoning ordinance. It's to create a new zoning district that does not currently exist. The MU district is intended to stand for mixed use, meaning that it will allow residential as well as commercial in the same area, but also on the same lot, both a horizontal and a vertical mix of uses. Think of our downtown, the area around the Public Square. That's a mixed-use area. Residential is permitted in buildings as well as residential. Some buildings are devoted entirely to residential, some devoted entirely to commercial. The gateway area right now does not offer a mixed-use district, and we hear frequently developers and property owners who are wanting to allow that sort of thing to be developed to bring to our community. One of the things that we had discussed with the avenues developers was to put some residential in some of the buildings they had when they were originally developing the avenues, and the zone did not permit it, and they abandoned that idea.
When we looked at, at that, when we went on our fact finding trip, we talked about doing that.
We did.
That's exactly what we wanted to do.
Now, after 10 years, I think we've demonstrated a need for it, and I think we have demonstrated the ability to regulate it. Part of the tools we're going to use to regulate this development will be that it is exclusively to be within the gateway overlay district. We're not looking at putting this on South Tierce Street. We're not looking at the mixed-use development on Memorial Boulevard. We're looking for only within the gateway design overlay district. If someone owns property that's not in the gateway overlay district, it might be that we'll eventually expand that district if they want to be part of the mixed use. Today, we're not proposing to, to do that. What we're looking at today, though, is this ordinance. A copy of it was included in your materials. The ordinance has some interesting things about it. It limits some uses that are, it excludes some uses that are currently permitted in the commercial highway. It doesn't have a full complement of uses that are allowed in the commercial zones, because some things just don't belong in a mixed-use area. But it does allow a broad range of use. It still allows a lot of things we already see on Medical Center Parkway, because they do belong in a mixed-use area. As I've gotten public input on this, we've heard that there's really three complaints about what we're proposing. The mixed-use district proposes that there be a minimum lot size of 9.5 acres for a, for a multifamily development that's purely multifamily in the MU district. The ordinance that we're proposing includes a requirement that if it's a mixed-use development, it have a minimum acreage of 4.5 acres, and if it is a purely commercial use, it have a minimum acreage of 1.5 acres. As I've gotten public input, I have discovered that there are several lots out there that are already less than 1.5 acres. I've also been trying to look and see where that could apply for the multifamily complexes. And at 25 units per acre, we're, we're looking at a minimum of 225 units if we were to see a complex. What I'm hearing is that might be a mistake, and you're going to hear some testimony tonight when we open the public hearing that perhaps we should not require a minimum lot size at all, that we all let the development requirements of landscaping, parking requirements, of economics dictate the size of a lot. If they can meet the minimum landscaping, if they can meet the minimum parking, if they can meet the minimum building standards, why should we place a minimum lot size on it as well? And I've come to sort of agree on that. So we want to discuss that, and I think that's really the only criticism I've heard from anybody about the proposed mixed-use district. Now, this first public hearing will be about creating the mixed-use district. After that public hearing has concluded, I'm going to suggest that you not prepare your recommendation yet, that we go on to the next public hearing, which will be then to consider the maps. And after we've had all the public hearings, I want to recommend that you come back and discuss your recommendations, because we're going to get public input, and we may decide to defer action before we, we take action.
You want to do four different public hearings, then?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. So we need to read in number one then and do the public hearing number one.
And now I'm turning over back to you, Chairman.
Okay. And let me read in number one, zoning ordinance amendment regarding the various amendments zoning ordinance to create a new MU mixed-use district, planning staff, applicants. Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Like anybody come forward that'd like to speak or obtain this proposal.
Matt Taylor of SEC. We've, we've looked over the documents, and in general, we think they're a good thing, going to promote further development out there. We did note the acreages. We would like to see those gone, as Mr. Adalot alluded to. We've got a couple of examples, Thornton's, the First Bank, National Bank in Menville along Gateway Boulevard, and the Academy Daycare. Each of those are less than an acre and a half, and I think those are excellent examples of what we want out there. So other than that, we're all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'm Tim Smoy. I live at 511 East Main Street. And by the way, I had to take my 20 by 38 foot flag down. I want to ask you about this MU. We have 44 acres at Robert Rose and over at Armory, and most of it is zoned commercial highway. I'm pretty fond of that zoning, and the largest part of the MU change is north of ours, which that... And the largest part of the MU change is north of ours, which that land that's north of ours is several feet higher in elevation, and it's almost like it's not a different country, but it's pretty distinct separation. And I really don't know what MU entails, but I really do like commercial highway, and I would like very much to leave ours commercial highway.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Smoy. Anybody else? Mr. Harney, did you have something?
My name is John Harney. I live at 6748 West Gum Road, and I'm here to speak in favor of the new fixed-use overlay zoning. I think this is a real good step in the right direction. Recently, I've been down in Nashville, working on a project down there in the downtown areas. If y'all have been down there lately, the Gulch area, the area around the Capitol, area around the hospitals, have just, are, they're building some really nice product down there, and a lot of them are mixed use. You're seeing retail on the bottom floor, apartments or condos on the upper floors, but I would have to reinforce what Mr. Adelot said about the limitations on the acreage or the minimum acreage design. I'm involved in a project down there that's looking at doing retail on the first floor, about 250 units of residential building, their own parking underground, and it's on less than four acres. A really nice project, a very upscale, a very expensive product to do, but is in demand down there. And I think the same thing can come to Murfreesboro. I've been involved in some development in the gateway and have really enjoyed it, but for example, we've got some land around the Gateway Lake that is a prime area to look at possibly, a high-rise residential development overlooking the lake park, being close to the hospital, close to a lot of nice amenities in that area. And I don't think it should be about quantity of land. I think it should be a quality of the development. You've got great ordinance regulations in place to make sure there's enough parking, there's adequate landscaping, the setbacks work, lighting works, all those sort of things. But I hate to see you put a minimum on the acreage amount, because as soon as you do that, we'll have somebody step in with a really nice project that fits right outside the box. And then we've got to go through either a rezoning or BZA or some kind of amendment. These days, the people I run into, when they finally decide to do something, they should have done it, started their project about six months ago. So when you have to go through the delayed process of going in and trying to amend the ordinance or try to get it rezoned, you push people away that go to maybe somewhere else that's more encompassing for mixed use. So I think this is a great idea to do. I hate to see you put a minimum or maximum density on the multifamily on a per-unit basis. I think you let the project itself stand for that and make sure it's adequately parked, adequately amenitized, landscaped, those sort of things. Let that dictate what is going on in these areas. But it is a great step to have this mixed use so that this area can develop in a wonderful way it's doing now, can even get better.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harney.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Evening, Chairman Lam. Members of the Planning Commission staff, I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy and Murphy. This is normally when I tell you who I'm representing, but I'm not representing anybody tonight. I'm here as a concerned citizen, so I don't have my suit on, so I'm not in my lawyer attire tonight. I support the city's efforts and the staff's efforts to be proactive, particularly in the gateway area. There are many properties in that area that are undeveloped right now, that are not appropriately zoned. I think this new mixed-use classification is forward thinking. I think it will be a major windfall for the city. It will help when developers come in who are interested in projects here. And I represent people who want to rezone stuff, but also people who want to come in and build stuff. And if you have it zoned appropriately, it'll speed this process up and will make it much easier to attract the kind of development that we want to see. Also, I'm not in favor of having acreage requirements. I think that's, I think that's not being forward thinking. What we want to promote in this area is innovative design. I think the development requirements are very stringent in this area, and if you, for example, Mr. Harney mentioned, you could have a very nice apartment complex or mixed-use complex with subterranean parking, and we want to, I think, in this area, think more vertically than horizontally. What you're asking for when you have minimum acreage requirements is sprawl. And we want to have this area of our community be a place where we want to build up rather than out. We want this area to be used in a way that's attractive, which I think it can be, and I think, I think the, having an acreage requirement is a little bit antiquated, and I think we don't want to be that. I think we want to be innovative, and we want people with, with new and exciting projects that don't really fit into the boxes we have now, who have to come forward and say, I want to do this, and the city say, well, we've got an area that's perfect for it. We don't have an acreage requirement. If you can meet our minimum parking requirements and our landscaping, bring it on. So I would like to say I'm strongly in support of the new district, the mixed-use district, these proposed amendments that you'll see to the maps to come, with the exception of acreage requirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down and giving us your input, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing nobody else come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, you want us to move on to number two?
Yes, sir. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Number two is the zoning map amendments to, for including areas in the new MU mixed-use district, planning staff's applicant. Aye. Rezoning for approximately 16.1 acres to be rezoned from commercial highway, approximately 229.6 acres to be rezoned from light industrial, and approximately 2.32 acres to be rezoned from heavy industrial to MU along Medical Center Parkway east of Thompson Lane. And II is rezoning for approximately 24.7 acres to be rezoned from RS 15, approximately 85.2 acres to be rezoned from commercial highway, approximately 102.5 acres to be rezoned from Office General, and approximately 23.16 acres to be rezoned from RM 16 to MU along Medical Center Parkway west of Thompson Lane. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. These will actually be held as separate public hearings, with the first one to be I, small, Roman numeral I. If they will please cue the map, this will be the area along the east side of Thompson Lane, and it's now shown on the monitor. We just discussed the creation of the proposed MU district, and now we're going to create, look at two areas where we're proposing to apply this new district. The first area that we're proposing is the area that's shown on the map. Most, all of this area either is owned or formerly was owned by the city of Murfreesboro. The only exceptions being a couple of parcels along Medical Center Parkway in the southwest area, excuse me, southeast area. The remainder of it was formerly owned by the city. This area is, a couple of areas that we have retained for corporate headquarters sites, and this MU district would be ideal for that type of purpose. It also includes land to the north of the Murfreesboro Clinic, over off of Garrison Drive. This would be ideal also. Some of these lots already have some buildings on them, and that would be along Medical Center Parkway across from the hospital. This is the map that was advertised. After the advertisement, I became aware of some interest on some of the properties around the Gateway Island over there in the area around Williams Drive. They were not advertised, so at this point, we could not recommend them, but I think that the representative of the property may have some comments that he would like to make about them. We need to conduct a public hearing, and after that public hearing, we'll go on to the next one, which will be the area that I would describe next.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. So you want two public hearings for, for number, for number two, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll do I first. Okay. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on section I.
My name is John Harney again, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Mark Pearl Gateway LLC. As Mr. Adelot alluded to, it's probably at our fault that when this map came out, we didn't address it quick enough, looking at the map on some of the undeveloped lots we've got in what we call Waterstone Office Park. There are four lots, I think, three of which front Gateway Boulevard, and one of which fronts Williams Drive, that are not included with the overlay that are not orange, they're left white. They are yet to be developed, and we'd certainly like to see those included in this overlay. We think it's an asset to have them in this new overlay district and would request that the map that got printed, and I talked to Mr. Adelot, and it had just been put out probably a day or two before I got to him, that we'd like to be included in that. I'm certainly glad to answer any questions in regards to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harney. Anybody else? Seeing anybody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to the public hearing on section II. Aye. Would anybody like to come forward?
Well, let me explain a little bit about it. This is the area that's located west of Thompson Lane, and you'll notice it's a different map. If they please cue the map, this would be the area west of Thompson Lane. It's before you now. The area that's colored blue is currently zoned OG, Office General. Office General is a suburban, a very low-intensity type of office district. The area that's colored purple is currently zoned commercial highway. The area that's colored yellow is currently zoned RS 15, and there's two areas. One of those areas at the end of Van Cleve Lane, and the other is south of Wilkson Pike, but not fronting on Wilkson Pike. And then the last area is an area that's colored orange that's zoned RM 16. Some of the owners, including the owners of the property that is colored orange, the RM 16, and the adjacent property to it, actually requested to be part of that area, to be included with this, and they were able to make that contact before the matter came before the planning commission. The remainder is what the staff has proposed. I will point out to you that Mr. Smythe's property is located along Robert Rose Drive on the south side of Medical Center Parkway. It's the park that goes east to west and then curves in a abrupt curve to the north. If you'll notice, the line that comes out from the RM 16, he owns everything south from that line, southward, on both sides of Robert Rose, and I think the cursor is pointing to it right now. Mr. Smythe's property was included because he is currently zoned commercial highway, and he is currently in the gateway design overlay district. But quite frankly, if Mr. Smythe prefers not to be in it, there may be a time when Mr. Smythe comes back and decides he does. But today, he understands commercial highway, he doesn't understand MU. Some day, that may change. So frankly, I don't feel that it is critical that his property be included. I felt that we were actually giving him an opportunity to be part of this process and be part of the proposed MU district. We need to conduct a public hearing and hear what the property owners would like to offer to us. And I did talk with Mr. Smythe about this, and I got one of his nice pens in the process.
I'll check with a little further on that.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on this section, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Sir.
You, well, I think you've already let your feelings be known, Mr. Smythe, about this.
Well, I'm fine with Murphreesboro.
Yes, sir. I understand that. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Close the public hearing on this. Moving on to section three, Mr. Adelot. Zoning Ordinance Amendment Regarding Amendments to Section 24, Article 3, GDO, Gateway Design Overlay District, Planning Staff Advocates. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This next public hearing is to consider some more amendments to our zone ordinance. We adopted the gateway design overlay district regulations in the, about 10 years ago, and we had the assistance of the consulting company Reagan Smith help us. They, at that time, just prepared the master plan for the city-owned property and helped us with restrictive covenants for that property as we were trying to envision the gateway development. And then we turned our attention to the area between Thompson Lane and the MU interchange that, at that time, was all under construction. This area out here was totally undeveloped. There was no avenues, there was no Thorntons, there was no Vista Center. It was pretty much farmland. As we embarked upon it, we had no experience, but we did have some good ideas. The regulations we've adopted, we have essentially, they have essentially remained unchanged. Since that time, our experience tells us communication is a very critical part of a good development. The success of a development is related directly to the ability of staff to communicate effectively with an applicant and his team early on in the project. We have come to find out that one member of the team never comes to our meetings, and that's the poor guy that actually does the work on the design thing. He's the technician who works at the computer, who prepares the drawings. He does not come to the meeting because his boss is the guy who gets that opportunity. He stays back at the office and does the work. One of the things we want to do is create a better path of communication for him. We want to create a very effective checklist so he knows what we're looking for. We want to create a way that he can get the information he needs to do a good job without us having to send it back to him and say, do it over. So that's part of what we're looking to do with these regulations. We've created some very extensive checklist. If anything, the checklist are a little bit overcooked in the, in the initial design review, but I think that they're much improved over what they were. A second thing that we have done, we have reorganized the GDO 1, the GDO 2, the GDO 3, and the GDO 4. GDO 1 has a, is, the only difference between these is really, GDO 1 allows a maximum height of 75 foot, if that's what the base zone is, unless you are a hotel, a hospital, or a office building, in which case you can come through as a planned development or apply for a variance. And that's what we saw with the Embassy Suites. They applied for a variance. The BZA was in an awkward situation. Technically, it really wasn't much of a hardship, but they were able to demonstrate enough of hardship that the BZA would grant a variance for the Embassy Suites. GDO 2 has a maximum height of 35 foot. It relates to the BP overlay district. Essentially, the GDO 2 became what the BP overlay district was intended to be, and there's nothing in the BP overlay district that is not already in the GDO 2. GDO 3 was the area that the city formerly owned, east of Thompson Lane. It was land where the hospital is located. It's the land where the Gateway Island is. All that was GDO 3, and it became GDO 3 by virtue of having been owned by the city. The Oaks Shopping Center was GDO 3, because the Oaks Shopping Center was formerly owned by the city. GDO 4 is the area that fronts directly along Medical Center Parkway, east of Stones River. A little bit of it is west of Stones River, but from Stones River back to Memorial Boulevard. It's, a lot of it is already developed, and we're looking at redevelopment opportunities there. So one of the things we're proposing to change in this is to reorganize a little bit and to do a couple of things. One, instead of sending the height issue back to the BZA, we're looking to lodge that with the planning commission and make that part of your initial design review. For instance, if the hospital were to come in today, under these proposed regulations, or the Embassy Suites, they're a hospital, or, and they are, or they are an office building or a hotel, they could be up to 150 feet tall. Bear in mind, the hospital is 145 feet, and so is Embassy Suites. Those are, buildings are the same height. Both of them had to go to the BZA for variances. Under this regulations, it's part of your initial design review. It's written in here. If it's a hospital and it's in the GDO 1 or the GDO 3, it's up to you. GDO 2 still has the cap of 35 foot. GDO 4, you can also get the additional height, but there's not much opportunity because lots are too small. Another thing that we've done is, for the GDO 3, which is city-owned property, we have excluded a lot of uses that are currently allowed in the light industrial zone, and also that were- also that were previously permitted in the commercial highway zone. Now, yes, a lot of those areas will become zoned Mixed Use, and the same uses are excluded, and the Mixed Use are excluded from GDO-3. The other things are really editorial in nature, not a whole lot of changes. We did include the vinyl policy in that we adopted a couple of years ago when we did the Henry Station, but we just wrote it into the regulations because there's no need to have an exterior policy when people who are looking for the rules want the rules to be part of the regulations. I think this is a good change. This is not going to change the quality of the developments that we see. It will basically streamline some of the things that we're already seeing and help people to get through the process, and we will maintain the quality that we already have. I think these are good amendments. We need to conduct a public hearing, and then we need to, well, I asked that you defer action on this until the end also.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, were you coming forward? You were hiding behind Mr. Ives here, so I couldn't see you. I'll reopen it for you.
My name is Pat Bowlen, I live 2512 West Park Drive, and I'm not sure this is the point at which I should have my questions, but in reference to the GDO-1, and I, Mr. Ham was not being, was not able to be here tonight, but he told me all about the meeting with Mr. Adelot, and what a good job Mr. Adelot did back in August. We were out of town with a death for almost the whole month of August, so we couldn't attend, but he did attempt to explain some of the things that you covered. And I guess my question is with the GDO-1, that because of that height, when you're talking about 75 feet for the residential area, of which my home does not front Wilkerson Pike, but I'm right behind the homes that do, and I have talked to some of the people who live along there and who had some concerns about the height within the GDO-1, and I know this is down below, but I wasn't sure in what you were talking about, if you were talking about GDO-1 still for all of this and about the changes with it, because I used to understand it, not quite sure that I do now. So, does that mean that within, if it is GDO-1, that it can go up to 75 feet in height?
I'll ask Mr. Adelot to address that at the conclusion of the public hearing, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I did not see you standing up there. Anybody else? Ms. Ives, is there anybody else standing there?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Now, Mr. Adelot, would you please address?
Yes, sir. GDO-1 will still overlay over the different districts. If 75 foot is a height that's allowed, for instance, in the Commercial Highway District, then it will be allowed in GDO-1. If you are a hotel or a hospital or an office, and you are in the GDO-1, during initial design review, we can approve you up to 70, excuse me, to 150 foot, like the Embassy Suites or the hospital. That is a possibility. And Ms. Bowlen, I'm going to put my business card up here, you may want to call me, and we'll talk more, because I know where you live, I've met you before. But I will add this, we are still proposing to maintain a strip of GDO-2 along Wilkson Pike, so that we won't have 75-foot-tall buildings fronting on Wilkson Pike.
I hope you heard it on that, and I think it's just a matter of, if you would maybe have the opportunity to go up there and meet with him, I'm sure he would be able to answer your questions, ma'am.
You should be on the map.
Thank you. Mr. Adelot, we're ready for section four here with four subparcels under that.
Yes, sir.
Section four is the zoning map amendments regarding to the amendments to GDO overlay districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, planning staff applicants. Now, we've got four subsections under this, are you wanting four separate?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Area 1 of approximately 33.1 acres along Thompson Lane, south of Medical Center Parkway, from GDO-3 to GDO-1.
Yes, sir. This area right here contains the area that is developed with the Oaks Shopping Center. It was placed in the GDO-3 district by virtue of its former ownership by the city. And when the city sold the property, it stayed in the GDO-3 district, along with the property with the hospital, the medical clinic, et cetera. The Oaks Shopping Center is more like the avenues. The uses within the development are more like what's in the avenues. Staff is proposing that it be reclassified from GDO-3 to GDO-1.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on this. Would anybody like to speak pertaining to this proposal?
And maybe we can get the illustration back up?
That's the mid-intercession. Here we go. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Move on to Roman numeral 2, or 2I. Area of approximately 123.2 acres along Robert Rose Drive and Thompson Lane from GDO-2 to GDO-1. Ms. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This property fronts along both sides of Thompson Lane, south of the, well, actually, and including the new Candlewood Suites Hotel. It extends all the way south to the southern boundary of the GDO District along Thompson Lane. It also includes land that fronts on Robert Rose, all the way over to, just behind the Home Depot. This area is in the GDO-2 district. Since it was placed in the GDO-2 district, we have had 1, 2, 3, 4 areas that have had height variances, either through a rezoning process or a variance process. These all are just beyond the hill, the top of the hill. They do not front directly across from the battlefield. Staff is proposing that these areas be reclassified from GDO-2 to GDO-1.
Okay. Any questions?
And can we get the map up, please?
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody would like to comment about this? Anybody at all? I'll close the public hearing. The next area, the next one is 3I. Area of approximately 26.25 acres along Wilkinson Pike, east of Gresham Park Drive, from GDO-2 to GDO-1. Ms. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This property is located along the south side of Wilkson Pike, and the area that is on the west side of Gresham Park Drive fronts all the way out to Wilkson Pike, and this is where the Vista Center is for the Chamber of Commerce. The remainder of it is a strip 250 feet away from Wilkinson Pike, but south of Wilkson Pike, that is proposed to be zoned to GDO-1. The remainder of it will remain GDO-2, that will retain the height limitation of 35 foot along Wilkson Pike. Staff has recommended this change be made also.
Okay. Any questions? Once again, I'll open the public hearing for this section. Yes, ma'am, come right up.
My name is Pat Bowlen, 2512 West Park Drive. Okay, so this is where I was supposed to come in, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, so with this, on the GDO-1, with this, is this going to be changed to Mixed Use, or is it still Office General? What are the plans for, for above the buffer? Okay, above the 250-foot buffer?
Chairman, let me just go ahead and add something. The area that's to remain GDO-2 will remain zoned RS-15, residential, single-family.
Okay, is that the, within the 250-foot buffer or behind the buffer?
That is the 250-foot buffer.
That is the buffer. So back behind that would become then the GDO-1.
And Mixed Use, yes, ma'am.
And Mixed Use. Okay. To clarify, the Mixed Use, can it go up to the 75? It depends on the application, whether, what type of building it is, or what type of property and the way it's zoned, right?
Yes, ma'am. It can be up to, let's see, I have to look at my chart. But again, you may be best to call me, because this is the kind of thing that we discussed very extensively at our neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, I was just out of town, I could not, there was a death in the family, and I could not.
I bear with me just a moment, and I'm going to give you a very clear answer.
I guess I just.
The maximum height would be 150 feet.
Since we were rezoning tonight, I wanted to be sure.
75 foot would be the maximum height for multifamily dwelling, complex, and for all commercial and mixed uses, it could be up to 150 feet with planning commission, site plan, and initial design review.
Okay, well, this is the only thing I have to say. If you remember that area along Wilkson Pike, is that our neighborhood is down almost like in a valley, and across on Wilkson Pike, there is a fairly steep incline, and 35 feet, even if you went up to 35 feet, for up, back behind the buffer, you're going to get quite a bit of elevation. And if they were allowed to go 75 feet, you would, you'd be extremely, you would be up over the neighborhood. And we had with Embassy Suites within our neighborhood, a lot of light pollution, and we are not, the neighborhood is not, is in favor of the gateway, and you all have done a good job. We're just saying, along Wilkinson Pike, if you could help preserve this neighborhood in our residential area, because of the way, the topography of the land, is that we are at the bottom, and the main concern that we have with the development, too, that if I, we would really appreciate you, is to keep in mind, is the amount of water that will be coming down that hill, down into the neighborhood, and I know that the storm drainage is part of the planning and everything.
Well, you know this has nothing to do with that.
Well, right, but I'm saying, if we go from GDO-2 to GDO-1, that's going to allow a much taller building, and you've already got quite a bit of an elevation of land above this neighborhood. We'd always, as we went, had gone into this in the past, that we had said, okay, GDO-2, 35 feet, general office, no one had any issues with that. It was only, when you're talking about that they, you could put in an application of 75 feet in that area, that would be, that would be an extreme height. So for that reason, for myself and the people who I have talked to, we would prefer it to remain, if at all possible, as the GDO-2. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Anybody else? If anybody come forward, I'll close the public hearing on 3I. Moving on to 4I, and the final one of the evening, is the area of approximately 23.5 acres along Medical Center Parkway from GDO-4 to GDO-1.
Yes, sir. If we could please cue the map for that. This area is located along the south side of the Medical Center Parkway. The area that has got the sort of black hatchmarks across it on the left side of the drawing is proposed to be rezoned from GDO-4 to GDO-1. That area is on the west side of Stones River. In fact, it's, eastern boundary is the Stones River, although you don't see the river on the drawing, that's where it's located. A big part of that property is the old demolition landfill the city had, and the, actually, the good development property is in the northwestern corner of the property, there's actually got development potential. We are proposing that this property be reclassified from GDO-4 to GDO-1.
Okay. Any questions to Ms. Adelot? No, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Now, Ms. Adelot, we need to go back and vote on several public hearings.
Yes, sir. First of all, what I want to ask the panelists, do you feel prepared to vote on these and to make any changes in the text that we might, I want to discuss? If you feel prepared tonight, you're ready to vote on them. If you're not, we would, I would suggest you defer and be prepared to discuss them on our October 16th meeting. I came here tonight with the expectation that that's what we might do, particularly with the amendments to the text, but when you open public hearings, you don't ever know what you're going to hear. We heard a lot of support for the Mixed Use tonight. I think that's something that we know, but we also heard some things that might need some tweaking. The remainder, I think that we need to discuss, you know, whatever you think's appropriate. I do think I'd give it another try to talk with Mr. Smythe to see what he wants to do.
Well, I think we need to consider Mr. Smythe's request for removing his parcel from the Mixed Use and retaining that as Commercial Highway, because it is a peripheral portion right there, and it won't affect the integrity of the rest of the Mixed Use development there, and we might want to look at the height restrictions that Ms. Bowlen was talking about.
And the acreage issues that were brought up in the overall discussion in MU as well.
Yeah, that's.
Could it be a great discussion at our October 16th?
All right, you want to defer, that's fine. I can be expected it might be the case.
I think these three issues that Councilman Gilli just outlined are, need a little more discussion, and let them tweak anything, the staff tweak anything with that. So I move we defer this until the October meeting.
16th meeting.
Motion to defer all these items that, till the next meeting, okay? Is, the second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Adelot, that moves us to your favorite part of the agenda, the staff reports and other business. Hopefully, you have none.
I have none.
Thank you. In that case, we stand adjourned.